I will ask, request the city clerk to call roll please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yarand Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. Thank you. I'll invite the city attorney to report out on our previous closed session.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council, members of the community and staff. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you. So as I said, welcome everyone to our meeting this evening, August. Can't believe we're already in August. And if you're zooming in or attending our meeting for the first time, you are now seeing all the incredible staff that works every day behind the scenes to make our city run so well. So thank you all for turning on your cameras at the beginning. And for those that stay till the very end, they actually turn on their cameras at the end too. Just saying, that's an incentive to stay for the end. Since our last meeting, I am sorry to report that there was a shooting that was in our downtown. It resulted in fatalities and injuries. And I know I speak for our council colleagues and the city staff and our community when I share how deeply saddened we all are by this. Our hearts go out to the victims and to their families. Chief Spiller and his team investigative team continue to work to find the perpetrators. We all want to reduce gun violence. And while many policy decisions are at the federal and state levels, locally, we're doing what we can. And San Rafael is a participant in Marin County's Gun Safety Collaborative. I think we're the only jurisdiction actually that is participating on that collaborative. And we'll continue to work with our community partners, the county government and local law enforcement to address gun violence. I will just have a land acknowledgement and then I'll turn it over to the city clerk. So in closing, we always include a land acknowledgement as it honors the original indigenous people who have lived and are living in San Rafael. This city is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, and we thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all today. So I will turn it over to the city clerk and she will tell or share with the public how they can participate.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. At this time, I'd like to ask staff to please turn off their cameras. Thank you. Before we begin, we would like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish language simultaneous interpretation provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish Zoom channel now through the completion of agenda item six A. You can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in Zoom. It looks like a globe and we have posted a link in the Zoom meeting in the description for the video on YouTube. As a reminder, we asked that everyone participating tonight speaks, please speak slowly to allow for our interpreter to effectively express your comments. And at this time, we would like to invite Pablo to repeat what I just stated in Spanish.
Muy bien, bienvenidos. Antes de comenzar, nos gustaría anunciar que la reunión del Ayuntamiento esta noche incluirá interpretación simultánea al español prohibido por intérpretes cualificados en el canal de Zoom de español. Desde ahora hasta la completación del asunto seis A. Usted se puede unir al canal de español haciendo clic en la barra de herramientas de Zoom, que ahora aparece un globo terráqueo. Hemos también publicado el enlace para la reunión de Zoom en la descripción del video de YouTube. Como un recordatorio a todos, les pedimos que si están participando y desean hablar esta noche, que por favor hablen lentamente y permitir a nuestros intérpretes que con eficazmente expresen sus comentarios.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube and viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 and use the meeting ID 81736920337 pound. Or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. Please note, we are no longer accepting public comment through YouTube live chat. If you're commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period for the item you're interested in providing comment for. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll press star six to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raised hand button to let us know you would like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. Closed captioning is available for this meeting and we've posted the link in Zoom chat now. Thanks.
Thank you, city clerk. Beginning of the meeting, we have open time for public expression. That's when any member of the public can comment on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda. City clerk, is there anyone who would like to give public comment?
At this time, if you'd like to provide public comment, please, please press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. And if you're using Zoom, please go ahead and use the raised hand feature. And I'm going to give everyone about 10 seconds. We do have a speaker.
Thank you. This is Ava Crisanti and I received a call from one of your constituents who was restricted from using the restroom at your community center. The porta potty outside had been removed and this elderly gentleman, who's very well educated and very nice, although it shouldn't matter if somebody wants to use a restroom, was told that, that the restroom was for customers or clientele only. But it's a community center that's funded by the city and I'm concerned that his being blocked from the restroom was discriminatory. I subsequently reviewed an email sent by Mr. Fong regarding the usage and Mr. Fong appeared not to understand the law. Mr. Fong also appeared not to understand in the same way that Mayor Kate has been unable to understand and in the same way that Lynn Murphy of your San Rafael Police Department has been unable to understand that there is a pandemic raging. And the needs of our poorest individuals are critical. Particularly public health amenities such as restrooms where they can wash their hands, toilets where they can relieve themselves and showers. As you know, Andrew Henning, your former director of homeless planning and outreach deliberately cut off mail service and showers for hundreds of homeless individuals, shifting the burden from the federal government onto, in case of the mail, onto the state, the county and the city. But these shenanigans with City of San Rafael continue to take place. And we are continuing to investigate the new CPRA that I request.
I see no.
Okay, no other?
No other public comment.
Okay, that closes the public expression, beginning of the meeting, and I will turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and council. I have a few updates and announcements this evening. The first one is that National Night Out is back tomorrow night, Tuesday, August 3rd, starting at 6:00 PM. National Night Out is a, well, it's a nationwide program that's been going on for 38 years. And San Rafael will be participating for the eighth time in this program. In short, it's a, it's a great opportunity to build neighborhood connections and also connect with the City of San Rafael Public Safety Professionals, our police officers and firefighters, and talk about how we can create safer and stronger neighborhoods together. All the events are outdoors. There's a pre-registration process, so neighborhoods have to apply ahead of time and put together an event. Typically, it's at like a local park, for example. And it's, it's, there's no kind of speeches or programs. It's typically an event where people can just kind of get together and talk to their neighbors and meet with police officers and firefighters. And the San Rafael City Council also is attending many of these events. The theme this year is emergency preparedness. And I do know that the mayor and several council members are going to be trying to visit with the police and fire department as many sites as possible tomorrow night. So that will be taking place in our community. So I just wanted to let people know what that was all about. You've probably seen the banners and signage around the community advertising that event. An update, because there was a significant update this afternoon around the pandemic and COVID-19. Marin County issued a press release this afternoon, early this afternoon, that went out to Marin and also the counties of Alameda, Contra Costa, San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara, Sonoma and the city of Berkeley. So all of these eight Bay Area health officers are issuing health orders saying that the vaccination continues to protect against a severe COVID-19 illness. But with the Delta variant now infecting a small percentage of vaccinated, vaccinated people as well as many unvaccinated people, these Bay Area counties came together to issue this health order requiring masks indoors and public places. And this is new and different because what we had been seeing more recently before this was a recommendation that it's advisable but not a requirement, which is now taking place as of the press release going out this afternoon and the actual order going into effect first thing tomorrow morning. So it requires all individuals regardless of vaccination status to wear face coverings when indoors and public settings. And there's some limited exceptions. And again, it starts tomorrow. Vaccines do remain the most powerful tool in the fight against COVID and the Delta variant. However, the Delta variant is infecting a small percentage of the vaccinated in the Bay Area who still remain strongly protected against severe illness, hospitalization and death. In those instances of infection of a vaccinated person, a face covering prevents further spread. So Bay Area health officials joined together today and are urging all unvaccinated residents 12 and older to get vaccinated as soon as possible. They're also requiring wearing a well-fitted mask indoors and public settings. And they're recommending that all employers make face coverings available to individuals entering their business. And businesses are required to implement the indoor face covering order. The Bay Area health officers will continue to monitor the data, including increasing vaccination through the region and determine when that order can be adjusted or lifted. At this time, there isn't a set time period when that order will be lifted. The best place for the public to hear more about this and all things related to the pandemic is the Marin County COVID-19 site, which is coronavirus.marinhhs.org. That's the same one that they've been using for these past well over a year, coronavirus.marinhhs.org. That's where you can find the latest listing of all of the current Marin County vaccination sites. And there are a lot of them all throughout Marin County. And there are several in San Rafael, including pop-up clinics like the one that's on your consent calendar tonight. That would be an extension of one that's already been taking place and at local pharmacies. In addition to vaccinations, COVID testing is also widely available throughout Marin County. And that same website has links to all the updated locations. Similarly to vaccines, there are several San Rafael options, including the San Rafael Community Center downtown for testing. But again, the best way is to check online first to find the closest site with opening hours that work for you. At the last meeting, Mayor Kate mentioned that there was a possibility of all of us reconvening these city council meetings in person in the chambers in the beginning of September. And unfortunately, with this latest information, that's going to be on hold. We are tentatively looking to the beginning of October, kind of taking it on a month-to-month basis to see what's going on with health orders and health advisories and the need in, in our community. So it is dynamic, like so many other things that we got used to during the pandemic where we don't have a particular date that's fixed in stone of when we'll reconvene in the council chambers. But again, we'll provide regular updates. We know it won't be this month's two meetings and or next month, hopefully soon thereafter. And we'll make sure that we use all of our normal channels to get the word out and let people know when we'll be back in person again. Lastly, I just have a brief update on the service support area, which is the area between Fifth and Mission Avenues at US 101 and downtown San Rafael. It's been in place a little over three weeks now, almost a month. And I'd say that the status almost a month in is that the site is so far fulfilling the function that it was intended for, which is to get services and support to people experiencing homelessness and help people on their path to housing. Marin County Health and Human Services has confirmed that having individuals in a safe place where their social worker can meet with them regularly is very helpful in getting people moved into housing options. We've seen people from the site experiencing homelessness move to the project room key hotel rooms. The Homeward Bound Run Emergency Shelter, which ultimately down the road will be 44 new units of permanent supportive housing. And we've seen people at the service support area move through the voucher process as well. We all wish it would be faster. Unfortunately, it's not a fast process, particularly the best outcome, which is obtaining a housing voucher so someone could get permanent supportive housing. That does take some time to go through the steps of that program. But it's a great outcome and we're trying to facilitate, even though we don't run that program, we're trying to facilitate making it happen and making it happen faster. As the council knows, the council approved about $260,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds earlier this summer to add social workers, also known as case managers, to help people take advantage of those housing vouchers made available through the county, through the housing authority and, and the additional ones through the federal stimulus program recently. So these social workers, some have been in place already and some are now getting hired and being deployed to help people resolve their homelessness. A benefit of the service support area is that it creates a convenient place for our community partners who provide for our community partners who provide services. And they are doing so, some weekly and some multiple times per week. There's a lot of examples, so I'm not going to provide them all here in this short update. But I just wanted to give you a few as an idea. The Downtown Streets team is providing weekly site cleanup, weekly mobile shower service outreach, and job recruitment efforts. The Ritter Center has been providing mobile medical services. Marin County Health and Human Services provided a mobile vaccination clinic as well as ongoing general assistance and case management that I mentioned. And Marin Humane Society provided a mobile veterinary clinic recently. And in addition to those, there are many other partners providing services, such as the Care Team, the SPAR Center, Salvation Army, and members of the Marin Street Chaplaincy. So we just wanted to thank all of those organizations. And hopefully, I didn't leave any out, but thank all organizations that have been providing support at the Service Support Area and those that will in the future as well, because it's helping to make the area achieve its goal of getting people the services they need on their path to housing. So the, again, just as a reminder, the Service Support Area is intended to be a temporary site. It's not intended to be a long-term solution, but instead, a temporary way in order to help people get types of services that I mentioned and connections with caseworkers and continue on on their path to permanent supportive housing. So thank you very much. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Kate. I appreciate being able to provide these updates.
Thank you. Important, as always, to know what's going on in our community, so thank you. Now it's opportunity for my fellow colleagues to give a report out on meetings they've attended. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. My boards have not met yet this month since our last meeting, but I have been working with the Lockloman Oversight Development Committee to resolve some implementation issues that have come up in the latest phase of that development. So I'm optimistic that we can resolve those and we'll get that project finished. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kate Lake, Vice Mayor. My boards and assignments are not meeting currently. I have one thing to report. Mayor Kate and I did film a FLUM install. Essentially, it's our water sensor that we placed into the ground her residence. And we will be releasing to the city website likely through our sustainability portion, just to show that it is installable by two elected folk and that we encourage folks in the community to do that, to have a better sense of how water is being used and improve our conservation. I will say that several community members have reached out to me and asked for this, so I believe that this will help folks and encourage conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. And we were able to secure the FLUM device from MMWD, went to their website, just to add that for anyone who's watching and wants to do it as well. Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I also installed the FLUM, and it was, I just, it was just me. I did it. Didn't take two. So it was good, but I also participated in Mulch Madness, which is the other rebate program. And my home's getting a lot of drive-bys and people stopping by and knocking on the door asking about it. So if anyone's interested, I have Mulch Madness in my front yard now. A bit of a formality piece that we went through with the, we had to approve the housing vouchers. And this is a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that's between the Marin Housing Authority and the Marin County Homeless Policy Steering Committee to approve the vouchers that we've been talking about. And these were actually, these are funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. And so these vouchers actually have different eligibility, and it's a lot more flexible in terms of who's able to use these vouchers. So it was really good. It was a formality piece, but really important that we were able to make that happen. Also, I attended the Public Art Advisory Committee, where we had the opportunity to review the different art projects that are happening, the one that's been completed at Kerner. I know Mayor Kate's going to speak to that one. And the progress of the one that will be at Tara Linda at Arbor Park. We had a preview of that art that is still a bit being refined. It was, it's very interesting. We had a lot of positive feedback. And Orin Carpenter, I believe, is the teacher who's working with the students from Youth in Arts. Lot of student representation on this art piece, which is really exciting. And then there'll be a follow-up meeting with the Social Justice Project Community. That meeting will be on August 10th, I believe in the evening. I think it's at 6 o'clock in the evening. So we'll be seeing more of what that art looks like and hearing from the artists as well as the leader in youth and arts.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kate. Kate, I must say that I am actually currently visiting my family and supporting my family. So I'm nine hours ahead, around 4:30 in the morning. So I didn't attend the last council meeting, but I do have a report from the beginning of July. I continued doing my homework around the 101 580 direct connector, and we did a little field trip. So that's always very interesting. And I had the pleasure to attend Minga, which is the community coming together to actually to support the community with alcohol justice. And we did like a nice cleanup day in the canal, so, which was actually very successful. So it's always a pleasure being there. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, council member, and I appreciate your devotion and dedication for calling in at 4:30 in the morning. We are totally impressed. I will close it out. Like everyone else, it's always a little bit lighter during the summer. Many boards and commissions take the time off. SMART, though, still had their meeting. We had a very light agenda two weeks ago. Most interesting was TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin. And one of the items we talked about was a feasibility study, the 101 feasibility story for part-time transit lane, which is bus shoulder, bus on shoulder is really the common way to say it. And there's been a study looked at to see if that would, how that would alleviate traffic, what the benefits would be to the community. So TAM is the ones that are overseeing that study. They presented to TAM, the commission, they presented to Marin Transit, actually, this morning. And it's really interesting, and they're looking at just going southbound. And I'm not going to give you the whole presentation here, but it really had to do with the numbers and where the congestion is. I know there's more information on the TAM website, and it does look like those modifications will be going in. It starts up north of us, I'm not sure the exact part in Nevada, about 10 miles north of us, because it ends at Central San Rafael, is where they look at the bus on shoulder. So more to come as those details get finalized. And then this morning, Marin Transit, where we talked about the 101 feasibility, what I just described to you. So the last item that Councilmember Kurtz referred to, I have spent a lot of time at 3301 Kerner. That is a site of Project Home Key, which is now currently a shelter, temporary shelter, which will become permanent supportive housing. The council, we, some of the council and staff toured that site two weeks ago just to see what it looked like. And boy, the views from the second and third floor are, the third floor are unbelievable. And it is being well utilized by the folks that are on the street. It's been a nice interim step to supportive housing, permanent supportive housing. Today, I attended a tour that I had organized of elected officials from all over Marin County, because wouldn't it be great if we had additional both shelter as well as permanent supportive housing through Project Home Key throughout the county? So that was well attended. Sosolito was there, Nevada was there, Belvedere, so that was great. And Supervisor Connolly was there as well. And on the outside, that's the inside. Again, unless you set up something ahead of time, you, people cannot go in there unless they are staying there. But on the outside is the mural. And this is a part of the Canal Arts Initiative, a part of our public art process. We had an unveiling on Saturday, and it was tremendous. The three artists were there. You can drive by there and see it. The art is up on top, and it says Bienvenidos to, and it's very welcoming. It has incredible images. So that's the big part. And then on the showers, the portable showers, are these fantastic artwork from youth, student artists, both through local schools as well as Drawbridge, which are for homeless youth. And it has both artwork as well as photos of the students. And there were many students there that were very proud to have their artwork up there. So just part of, the first of many, hopefully, of bringing art to San Rafael and connecting with each other through that medium. So that was a great, great way to spend the weekend. Okay, so thank you again for all that you do when you're not in a council meeting. It's very much appreciated. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. We have three items on there. Do any of the council members, would any of the council members like to hold any of the items? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the city clerk to see if any members of the public would like to give comment on either A, B, or C.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine once you hear a notification that the host isn't inviting you to speak. You'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Additionally, please speak slowly for our Spanish interpretation of this meeting. And if providing comment in Spanish, please indicate so prior to your comments. And may I request a timer? Thank you. Okay, we do have one speaker, and again, this is for the consent counter items, five, A, B, or C.
Thank you. It's my understanding that you plan to let people comment on every agenda item, and so therefore, there should have been an opportunity to comment after the city manager and mayor's comments. I do want to point out that the city manager was remiss in not describing the temporary shelter space set up by San Rafael Police Department and City of San Rafael for the people they moved from the freeway encampment. I have both interviewed people who are staying at that new city-sanctioned, quote-unquote, temporary safety, whatever weird euphemism you are using for what is essentially an open-air jail for poor people. And I want to point out just the idiocy of someone who actually has a title of mental health liaison, but no credentials for such, Lynn Murphy with the San Rafael Police Department, actually moving people from one area underneath a freeway to another area underneath a freeway, just one block away, where they are now treated even more like criminals than they already were. And let me point out that these people are not criminals. They're simply poor. There is no justification, and there is no decency involved in this. You did not provide toilets. There's a porta potty. I can't, I can't even begin with the list of what is wrong with this. But it is, you know, last time you had a city council meeting, I called in, and I explained that I'd done a CPRA asking for Lynn Murphy's credentials, and I received none. And in response, Kate Collin made a comment in response, and she said Lynn Murphy is a very special person. And I think that's great. I'm sure she is a very special person.
I'm just going to give everyone about five seconds to either press star nine if you're calling in or use the raise hand feature in Zoom to provide public comment. Okay, there's no further public comment.
Okay, so this was public comment on the three items in the consent calendar. So unless there are other questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay, motion seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushing.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedan Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0, and I want to thank Councilmember Hill. One of those items was his designation to the League of Cities, League of California Cities Annual Conference. I just wanted to call that out. That was one of the items on the consent calendar. Thank you for representing us there. Okay, so we are continuing the conversation that we started last, to meet, our last meeting two weeks ago on the San Rafael General Plan 2040 Downtown Precise Plan and Zoning Ordinance. I see Barry Miller and Director Judice here to walk us through that item. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I just want to, I won't be saying a whole lot. I just want to introduce once again our consultant project manager, Barry Miller. At our last meeting, Barry presented the final EIR, and your city council adopted a resolution certifying the final EIR. So tonight, Barry will be providing a presentation on the General Plan 2040 document and the Downtown Precise Plan and Form-Based Code and other related code amendments for your consideration. That's all I will say, and I'll let Barry take it from here.
Great, thanks, Ally. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
That's great, and hopefully you can see the shared screen, and we've got the title slide in front of you.
Yep.
So thanks for the introduction, Ally. We did a fairly deep dive through the General Plan and Precise Plan at the last meeting, so I won't be repeating that information again. But kind of just to recap, at the last meeting, you certified the final EIR for the project, affirming that it was an adequate document. So that was completed on July 19th. We have four other actions. Actually, there are five actions here, because the final box on the screen is two ordinances. And I'm going to go through these in the next couple of slides. So this evening, what you have before you are Adoption of the SEQA Findings and Statement of Overriding Consideration, Adoption of General Plan 2040, Adoption of the Precise Plan. Those are three resolutions. And then you have two ordinances, one rescinding certain sections of the municipal code and making other code changes, and another adopting the Form-Based Code, which is part of the Downtown Precise Plan as the new zoning regulation for downtown San Rafael. Before we go further, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the members of the San Rafael General Plan 2040 Steering Committee. You can see their names listed on the left in this slide, particularly the shout-out to the Chair, Stephanie Plant, and the Vice Chair, Omar Carrera, also to our alternates and to former committee members. This group met 25 times over a period of two and a half years, and also met in a number of subcommittee meetings, and really provided enormous, enormous benefit in shaping the contents of the General Plan and having really thoughtful conversations about the future of San Rafael. So thank you to the Steering Committee members and to members of the Planning Commission, who aren't listed here, who held 10 public hearings before making their recommendations to the city council to approve the documents. So I'm going to just go through the resolutions. The first, as I mentioned, is SEQA findings. And this is required because the EIR found significant unavoidable impacts on air quality, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, and transportation. What the resolution does is it recites the findings of the EIR, that these impacts are significant and unavoidable, even with mitigation, and then explains why the benefits of the project, in spite of these impacts, outweigh the environmental impacts. And they are categorized in the resolution in these three categories that you see here. There are economic benefits associated with the project. There are environmental benefits. Despite the significant unavoidable impacts, there are still environmental benefits. And there are social benefits to adopting the General Plan and Downtown Precise Plan, and those are recited in the resolution. The next resolution adopts the General Plan 2040 as San Rafael's long-range plan. The bullet list that you see here essentially describes the contents of the resolution. But for those who may be watching this online, the General Plan is the city's long-range plan for future growth, development, and conservation. It's required by state law. We're updating the General Plan 2020 through this process. And there are 13 different elements in the plan corresponding to topics such as land use, transportation, open spaces, and so on. And so this is essentially a complete update of General Plan 2020 that you'll be adopting this evening. We, again, we did a deep dive at the last meeting with the presentation. There are a number of edits that have been made since July 19th. I just wanted to highlight these. These are in response to comments from the mayor and council, both at the last meeting and a few subsequent conversations, acknowledging that the city can't do it alone, essentially, that the private sector and each individual in San Rafael is part of achieving the city's goals for the future, particularly when it comes to things like climate change and wildfire prevention, conserving water, and so on. We removed some names of individual nonprofits and advocacy groups in the plan. We generally avoid doing that in the document. And so we are consistent now in the way we've handled that. We acknowledged potential partners for preparing an economic development strategy. Then we made a number of edits to the equity, diversity, and inclusion element in response to feedback, clarifying some of the terms and really explaining. clarifying some of the terms and really uh explaining more about the, the concept of diversity and what that really means. That it, that uh it's both a demographic variable, but it also reflects the fact that over the course of one's life, uh one's needs change in terms of physical abilities, um mental health and so on. And just really kind of more of an explanation of what that all uh means as a framing concept for the, this new element of the general plan. Uh, the third resolution you'll be considering adopts the downtown precise plan. As we mentioned last time, this is a plan that was primarily funded by a grant from the Association of Bay Area Governments that looks at ways we can improve and strengthen downtown San Rafael as a place to live, work and visit. And uh again, the resolution, I won't go into the, to the specific bulleted points here, but this is a, both a land use plan, a design plan, a transportation plan, an affordable housing and anti-displacement strategy, a plan for the improvement of public space and uh an economic development strategy for downtown. It also includes the form based code, which we'll talk about in just a moment. A couple of edits have been made to the downtown precise plan since July 19th. All of these are included in the agenda materials for tonight's meeting and are, were on the website uh mid last week. Uh, these primarily responded comments from, from the last meeting. Emphasizing the approach to unhoused residents should focus on creating more permanent supportive housing in the city and working with the county and other service providers, uh clarifying what the responsibilities are for addressing homelessness. And uh we've done that in the revisions to the precise plan. Uh, there were a couple of edits that were requested by members of the public that um you saw in letters that were submitted over the last two weeks that we're not recommending, although the council is welcome to discuss these and consider other uh solutions. But the first was a request uh from Victoria DeWitt in the West End neighborhood to reduce the height uh bonus in a triangular shaped area where Fourth Street meets Second Street. This is kind of uh we're near the Shell Station and the IHOP and that's about five parcels where the height limit proposed is 40 feet and a bonus of up to 20 feet would be allowed for projects with a substantial amount of affordable housing. The request was to only allow a 10 foot bonus and we're recommending that that uh not be changed, that we maintain that the higher bonus. Uh, San Rafael Heritage submitted a request asking that the precise plan uh make a stronger case for the Northwest Pacific Depot, otherwise known as the former whistle stop uh being a historic landmark. Uh, we had a number of studies done, uh there have been a number of studies done on this building in the past, been a little bit inconclusive. Uh, the recommendation of the precise plan is that this building is subject to further study, but we're not strongly advocating or advocating landmark status at this point in time for that building. It could be revisited in the future, but not at this point in time. Um, a couple of additional comments were received after the staff report and we've forwarded those to the council. Uh, Sustainable San Rafael provided a letter of support for the plan, but urging the council to take swift action on the climate action measures in light of the significant unavoidable finding for greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, the, the uh letter encourages very, that the council act very soon on some of the measures in the conservation element in particular and in the mobility element dealing with climate. Uh, the Sierra Club likewise submitted a letter urging the council to uh act soon on the measure in the general plan to adopt a tree protection ordinance. Victoria DeWitt provided a letter asking that the West End Village and West End Neighborhood be further distinguished in the municipal code through definitions and so on. And also uh supporting the tree protection ordinance that is included in the general plan. I'm gonna move now into the code amendments. And again, I mentioned there are two ordinances. Uh, the first ordinance makes a series of amendments to the municipal code and the second adopts the form based code. Right now, uh downtown San Rafael has seven different zoning districts, which are a remnant of the 1993 Downtown Vision Plan. Uh, these are referenced throughout the municipal code and uh they'll no longer be applicable once the downtown precise plan is adopted. Uh, so the resolution, or sorry, the ordinance uh rescinds those existing zones and the development standards associated with them. It also uh corrects for internal consistency, all of the use tables in the zoning regulations to eliminate the references to these zones, uh rescinds some of the standards from that 1993 plan such as providing height bonuses for elevated skywalks between buildings. Uh, and also create the uh, the amendments create a new downtown mixed use district, which is essentially the, a holding zone in which all of the downtown precise plan uh regulations will apply. You can see the boundary of that on this map here. It is the downtown precise, excuse me, the downtown precise plan boundary. I'm, I mentioned uh on the last slide, there was a, a bulleted item about a number of changes to Title 14. In other words, the zoning regulations that are being made through this process in addition to those connected to the downtown plan. Um, the reason we're making a couple of other changes now is that there are some economies scale associating with batching uh code changes together with other code changes with, such as the ones we're doing for downtown, rather than bringing these back to you separately. Uh, most of these are associated with state legislation and things that are already being done in practice. I'm going to just go briefly through three slides on the uh changes to the zoning code that are not related to the precise plan that are before you this evening. Um, the first is required by state law. Previously, uh state law required that cities could not require a use permit for small family daycare facilities. These are facilities serving eight or fewer, uh but you could require a use permit for larger facilities. In 2019, SB 234 was passed and that indicated that large family daycare facilities also had to be permitted by right, in other words, without a use permit. Uh, so we can no longer require use permits for large family daycare and residential areas. Uh, the city's been complying with this since it was approved in 2019, but hasn't amended the code formally to make this uh the law. So that is going to happen as part of this action. Another amendment relates to the time limits for zoning permits. Uh, these are things like variance permits, uh use permits, exceptions, design review permits and so on. Uh, right now, the municipal code stipulates that these permits are valid for one year from the time that they're issued. Uh, in practice, many of the projects that require these kinds of permits need more time before a building permit can be issued. Uh, so we are recommending that this be increased to two years, which is actually what's done, again, done in practice. It also, the two year limit also lines up with some of the state uh requirements for permitting such as subdivision approvals. Uh, so what we're doing here is essentially codifying existing practice, avoiding the need for applicants to file extension requests after just one year for projects that may have a, a two year, needed two year permit window. Uh, the update of the downtown regulations also provides an opportunity to incorporate recent state laws relating to cannabis licensing. The city's zoning categories generally track the state's licensing categories. So they're easier to administer and when the state makes a change to its categories, uh this can require that the city make changes to its categories, which is what's kind of what's required in this case. Uh, right now, the zoning regulations identify the infusion of cannabis uh oil or butter that's been prepared off site, in other words, at another location into a business product that's produced in San Rafael. Uh, that's allowed in the commercial office zone and in all the industrial zone, zones. Uh, the state now has a licensed category that permits both the infusion of products and manufacturing of the cannabis oil that is infused at the same site, uh which is more advantage advantageous to the business. And so we're recommending uh as part of these zoning amendments that you would uh, we would change the cannabis infusion category to a new cannabis manufacturing category, which allows both manufacturing and infusion on the same site. Uh, and then this would only be permitted in the industrial zoning districts, no longer in the CO districts. The second ordinance adopts the form based code.
Barry, sorry Barry, I'm gonna have to interrupt you. I apologize. We're gonna take a five minute recess to allow our interpreter to have a break. And then we'll resume.
So just to clarify, um we, at 7:55, we will reconvene. And that's because we have one interpreter. We weren't able to have two.
That's correct.
Okay. So. Okay. Thank you. Welcome back. We needed that five minute break for interpreter, Spanish interpretation. So Barry, if you can pick up where you left off.
Sure. And I've just got one more slide after this, so we're, we're very nearly done. Um, so the, I was beginning to describe the second of the two ordinances. And this uh ordinance adopts the form based code as the zoning regulations for downtown San Rafael. Uh, this is chapter nine of the precise plan and we've discussed uh the form based code at prior council meetings. It establishes four new zones, each with unique site and building standards uh which uh address things like parking, height limits and so on. Uh, as we've discussed before, the form based code relies on certain design and site planning standards to define the form of new buildings rather than relying on traditional metrics like density and floor area ratio. Uh, the ordinance includes four major sections, including an explanation of its purpose, the standards for each of the zones, supplemental standards on topics like massing and facades, and then definitions. Uh, so for tonight's hearing, we have an opportunity for clarifying questions from the council, public comments and council discussion. Uh, we are then asking for council action on the three resolutions and the two ordinances. And those ordinances would come back to you for a second reading on August 16th. And that concludes the presentation and I'll end the screen share with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And we had a very robust discussion. Uh, I know we were talking about the environmental impact report at our previous meeting, but we actually talked quite a bit about the general plan. And thank you for those additional edits. Um, it, you can tell that it was incorporated what uh both the council input as well as a public comment. So thank you. Um, I will ask my colleagues if there are any questions. Uh, Vice Mayor Bushy.
I had many questions and they have all been answered in the years of meetings that we have had. So no questions. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for participating on the committee. I, I thought it was a year and a half, but you said over two and a half years, I think it was. Wow. Okay, uh councilmember Kurtz.
Um, the only question I have and I, and I, it's, it's related to the ordinances that are included tonight in this as it's relating to the plan. Or are they, can you just tell me a little bit more about why they're included tonight versus, or as separate, as a separate item?
Um, sure, the primarily the reason they're included as a separate item is because you've got a resolution adopting the plan and you've got an ordinance adopting the, the zoning standards. Um, the zoning standards are part of the municipal code and they're, you know, they're the, the legal tool for implementing the plan, whereas the plan is more of a policy document. So it, it's essentially a new set of zoning standards for downtown. Those have to be adopted by ordinance.
Right. No, I understand that. And I, but it's sort of, they're lumped in together right now under the general plan 4040, even though there'll be separate line items for um passage, I guess. But in terms of, I, is that it? Or will you be expecting additional ordinance request changes to come forward based off the plan?
There are some action items in the general plan to look at ordinance changes in the future. And you will, in the next four year, five years, however many years, you'll, you'll be hearing from the planning department as these are implemented with requests for other ordinances. But these are the only ordinances that really are required right now in order to make the downtown plan work.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
That's great. And thanks to everyone who has worked on it. Jesus, Louise.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two questions, Barry. Um, one is, you, you know, I think this document and also the accompanying videos on the site about form based code. about form-based code are really wonderful to bring laypeople into the process. The transition to form-based code, not just for the community development department, but as well as developers and other folks in the community, is the change something that is, do we anticipate any hiccups there? And have we done anything to mitigate some of the, kind of that transition from folks, for folks in the community or developers in department of CDD?
Sure. I, I will give you a brief response, and Ally may want to add on to this. Yes, there will be hiccups. I think it's inevitable. It's a big change. And we may be coming back to you at some point in the future saying, you know what? These standards, we want to tweak them a little bit. They're not achieving the desired outcomes. That's okay. That's part of the process. Your other point about it's a big change, how are we going to explain to applicants and others to come in? That is a task that we're, that the, you know, the planning department is going to need to do in the coming months and year as we roll this out and begin to implement it. And Ally, you may want to expand on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, saying that, you know, typically when you adopt something new, especially when it's such a, you know, large area of your city, that, you know, you're bound to, you know, find things that you weren't expecting when you were going through the process. And so that's, there's an opportunity for refining those code amendments in the future. And then the other thing I was going to say is, you know, we have been already kind of reviewing the form-based code as we're looking at developments that have been submitted already, even though we weren't applying the code. We were at least kind of comparing what, what would be possible with the form-based code. And then lastly, we'll begin establishing some procedures for our staff to use as they begin to, you know, operate the form-based code.
Thank you. That helps to set expectations. This is something that is continuously improved. My other question on the, moving the one-year to a two-year for permits, is there, this is probably the case, but what is, is there any value in holding things as they are? In other words, that, that if people have to submit extension, is there any value to that? Or is this really just creating unnecessary bureaucracy?
I, I would, if you don't mind, Barry, I'll go ahead and take this. I would say there is very little value, and only because right now the way our recommendations are presented to our decision-makers is because we know that it's going to take time. We already add that additional condition of approval that says this approval is good for two years. What this does is just formalizes that so that we're not having to evaluate it every time we review an application. It's just already in the code. It's already, it would already be a two-year process. Like I said, we're already, we're already informally using it in a way because we're recommending conditions of approval that have that two-year timeframe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Thank you. No questions at this time. Just really thanking everybody. I know it took like, I attended a few meetings, and I know it's been a lot of work. So really appreciate the community, the entire community, and the city and the staff coming together to come up with the plan. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have any additional clarifying questions, so I will ask the city clerk to open up the public comment for this item.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Additionally, please speak slowly for our Spanish interpretation of this meeting. And if providing comment in Spanish, please indicate so prior to your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Collin and council members. Tonight, I wear the general plan steering committee historic preservation hat. Now, this is Jeff Rhodes, by the way. San Rafael Heritage shares the same vision for downtown as you do. We all want an economically robust and socially vibrant heart for our city. Preservation and adaptive use of historic resources are part of a well-choreographed strategy for combining the new with the best of the old, contributing to an authentic and engaging place and distinguishing us from other just-anywhere USA places. When we read the initial draft of the downtown precise plan, we noticed how fussy and restrictive it was for new development adjacent to historic resources. This wasn't consistent with your vision. The draft plan was building in a conflict between preservation and your objectives. We recommended elimination of these restrictions and implementing actions that incentivize restoring our better older buildings. These changes were incorporated in the plan before you. This is the best of both worlds. We ask for two things. The first is to embrace heritage as a partner. Consider us as a resource that contributes to the improvement of downtown and our city's quality of life. The second is to actively implement preservation incentives and a historic resource advisory committee included in general in precise plans. These are needed to make improvements to finer older buildings economically viable and build local preservation expertise. Let's provide owners motivation to improve their properties. In closing, gratitude and congratulations are due to Barry Miller, Paula Jensen, and city staff for their tenacity and commitment to the downtown precise plan and 2040 general plan. With so much to consider, at times, it felt like we were standing at the receiving end of a fire hose. You made it almost comprehensible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
My name is Lindsay Clum. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm also with San Rafael Heritage. With our focus on historic preservation, we continue working on the downtown precise plan and resource, historic resource inventory. Our founding in 2015 happened when major changes for the Whistler Stock Depot property were proposed. We pursue the task of saving historic buildings and compare this goal to the rescue of the Falkirk Estate from demolition in the 1970s. The city now treasures this resource as an important asset to the community. The depot is such an asset, and we know it will be treasured by future generations. We champion local landmark status while understanding the need to follow the high standards of the National Park Service in performance with the Secretary of Interior's historic standards. And it is also the case that the historic California Historical Building Code allows the city to designate a resource as a local landmark. It allows for any level of government to determine historic resources, giving local landmark designation whether or not qualifying on a state or federal level. The depot is a treasure for the city. It is instantly recognizable. It radiates the greatness of the relevant era that built San Rafael into the city it is today. It is a qualifying local landmark, and we envision the structure as a foundation for a downtown historic district. Restored and adapted in performance with national standards in this one code's rating. In addition, whatever the transit district's plans for the transit center, we expect to be involved on the team in the restoration and adaptive reuse of this building. We will continue our pleasant working relationship with the city to always be a resource. We share goals with the city council for a greater mission for San Rafael. It is critical to have strong economic growth in the city for an attractive, vital, exciting place. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, this is John Reynolds, resident of the canal. I appreciate this, moving forward with this precise plan and the plan for towards 2040. Looks like we're considering all environmental issues and being, development of places and housing that's going to be sensitive to the environment as well. I am supporting the issue about trees. We need to honor the trees. We also honor somewhat the height of buildings, perhaps in the west side. Maybe it's not good to have very high developments there, but we do need to consider the density bonus, you know, that, that we should place housing in other parts of the city that are higher, perhaps, to accommodate a density bonus for developers to do. And then the final thing was that developers have talked about a long-term wait for approving the projects. I guess it has to do with two-year, to change it from one year to two-year to allow them to have flexibility. But the issue is that they have to pay their contractors and architects for a longer period of time. So hopefully, that's been dealt with in other ways. But I'm just putting that information in to you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mayor Kate, I will have to request, we're having some technical difficulties with our interpreter. With our last-minute cancellation, I'm gonna need to request another brief recess to try to figure that out and see if we can switch devices, if that's possible.
Okay. And so when you say brief, I think we just want to know what, when that time is.
Four or five minutes, as long as we can get interpretation ready.
Okay, so that's eight sixteen.
So people know. Hoping for eight sixteen.
Okay, so we will take a short break, and thank you, everyone who's watching the meeting, as we make sure that our public interpreter, or, excuse me, our Spanish interpreter gets the break that they need. We'll break for five minutes. Welcome back, everyone. Again, thank you for your patience and flexibility as we are providing Spanish interpretation. The city clerk is going to review how you can participate. We are in the middle of public comment, but if you could do a refresher, and then we'll continue with public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Yeah, if you're commenting on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're commenting by telephone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment, and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Additionally, please speak slowly for our Spanish interpreter for this meeting. And if providing comment in Spanish, please indicate so prior to your comments. I see no public comments, but I'm just gonna say one more time, if you're calling by phone, please press star nine. I see no hands raised. I do see one now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. This is Bill Carney, speaking for Sustainable San Rafael. We're now in the decisive decades of a worsening climate emergency. And we're feeling it in heatwaves and drought, fire, flooding, and smoke. The plans before you lay out ways to meet this emergency with zero-emission buildings and mobility, with a transition to a clean energy economy, with equitable workforce housing in walkable communities, with trees and ecosystems return to health and pulling carbon from the air. These are extraordinarily well-crafted plans. We ask that you implement their key provisions fast enough to get us through this intensifying crisis to a truly sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Eva Crisanti. I wanted to point out one of the ironies of so many people concerned about global warming and the environment, which clearly we are in the middle of a crisis. I do want to point out that the people who are currently being punished at Lynn Murphy's jail camp underneath the freeway, which is an interesting location for people who've been traumatized by being homeless. Those people use probably the least resources of anyone on this call. You know, they don't have second homes. They're not flying to Hawaii or Croatia for vacations. They don't have a car. They're really just getting by. And yet, instead of recognizing how modest their lifestyles are, and instead of recognizing that in many ways, most of us should be cutting back, the wealthy environmentalists of Marin County repeatedly call in and talk about general plans without once acknowledging that the only people who are living within their means are literally being treated like criminals. are literally being treated like criminals, uh, by your police department in the guise of Lynn Murphy. I also want to point out that, um, some of these unhoused people who are now being kept at Camp Murphy underneath the freeway overpass had made a rational choice, um, for their own mental health to stay in a park because they couldn't afford housing. And, uh, the park created some quietude for them. And Lynn Murphy has moved these individuals, many of them elderly men, like the man who just called before me. She's moved them to a location underneath a freeway overpass. I'd like to know why someone who's supposed to be the mental health liaison for San Rafael is doing such a thing. It's unacceptable. And so is your leadership with regard to home.
I see no hands raised, but I'm just gonna make one more, one more call for if you're on the phone, please press star nine. And if you're providing comment through Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature and I'll give everyone about five seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment on this item and bring it back. And I hopefully Barry and Director Judicee, uh, can come on, um, the, I, I had four questions. So Barry, do you wanna take, I can read them or you can take a stab at the questions you had and then I can see if we missed any. What's the best way?
Yep, you'd like to go through your questions, I, I can respond to those.
Okay, so this is based on the public comments, so these aren't, the, these are responding to what we just heard. So there was a comment about embracing the heritage, so maybe you can speak to the historic preservation that is embedded in the general plan. The, talking about implementation of historic preservation. So there were, Jeff, Mr. Rose had talked, had comments about historic preservation. So maybe, uh, just responding to that. Oh, and also as part of that, the depot site and how that fits into that conversation. And then finally, there was an interesting question as, does the two-year by formalizing what we already do informally for the two-year permit process, are there implications for developers or others in terms of their fees? That's probably a Director Judicee. Um, so those are the ones related to the general plan that I heard.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to handle the questions about historic preservation and, um, Ally can speak to the, uh, the two-year question. With respect to preservation, couple of things that, uh, the general plan 2040 has a much more robust set of policies and programs relating to historic preservation than the previous general plan. And part of that is we're a more mature city than we were 20 years ago when that plan was written. There are a whole lot of buildings that were built in San Rafael in the forties and fifties that weren't historic when the last general plan was, uh, and even, even the early sixties, that weren't historic when the last general plan was prepared, that now meet the Secretary of the Interior standards for 50 years or older. So we, we needed a better set of policies and a stronger set of policies. And San Rafael Heritage and other community partners helped us create those. So, um, I think we're in a better position now policy-wise to move forward. Specifically for the downtown precise plan, uh, as, as Jeff Rhodes mentioned, there were some initial standards that were included in the first draft. We got some feedback that these are gonna be difficult and we revised those standards. So I think we're generally in agreement that the standards we have now are more workable for both the development community and the private sector and the, um, and, and the preservation community. We're, we're really, uh, you know, we've struck that balance. Specifically with respect to the depot, the initial historic survey that was conducted as part of the precise plan determined it was not a significant building. It did not have the qualities that, um, would allow it to be classified as, as historic. And we had shown it as such and identified it as such in the first draft. What we did hear from Heritage is please take another look. And through the EIR process, we had a second historic preservation consultant look at the building. We, we really didn't change the findings about the building, but what we did do is moved it from the not significant category to the, uh, may need future study or further study, recognizing we may not solve this issue through the precise plan process. It may be something that, um, gets resolved in the future. Uh, we did also look at the boundaries of a potential historic district in downtown San Rafael and I, I identified that the boundary of that district would include the depot building. So there's an eligible historic district in that part of San Rafael. The depot is within that district. It may well be a contributing building. That's something we would determine in the future. But right now, um, you know, some of the, not every issue has been resolved in this process. And that's one that I think we may need to come back to. That, that I think covers most of the preservation questions.
It does. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Director.
And yeah, so the question about, um, the implications there, so if we were to keep the, except the timeframe to one year and our, our recommendations for approval of projects stayed at one year, that after that one-year time period ended, an applicant would have to request an extension, which would be a new application fee. So has a positive impact in that, A, it's allowing that adequate amount of time without requiring the applicants to submit a request for, um, a new, new, or an extension with payment of a new fee. And it also, um, you know, it's time, it, in terms of staff time, it's, it's, um, it's something that is, you know, for us, it's, it's helpful because, you know, having to prepare a report and presentation and schedule it for a public hearing takes time. And when it's been only a year, the expectation is, is that it's, you know, you're going through that same process. And so the, the, the staff savings itself is, is useful as well.
Thank you for that. And also it came up tangentially in public comments, but we'd received a letter. Barry, if you could speak to, uh, the tree, uh, ordinance or the tree protection, because that had come up in both the letter and I think it was in your slides as well. Uh, we'll ask the council to, um, when we go around to weigh in on that, but could you just clarify what it is you want us to weigh in on or, or where the plan is on that? Thank you.
Yeah, we're not, at this point, not recommending any change to the language in the current plan. But I wanna point that, the draft that you have before you, but I wanted to point out that the draft that you have before you has been changed quite a lot since October of 2020, when this was first released, that there was a a number of speakers who came to the planning commission and said, uh, look, these policies and programs related to tree preservation are not strong enough. And we would like to see more proactive language. Don't just say, well, consider a tree ordinance at some point in the next 20 years. Commit to looking, taking a hard look at the, um, tree regulations sooner and come up with something that, uh, identifies heritage trees, protected trees, a process for removing trees. What we said is that that is gonna require additional community engagement, uh, additional, uh, technical study to look at what trees might be on that list. We can't do all of that now as part of adopting the plan. So what we did is we strengthened the program in the general plan, directing, um, the city to develop an ordinance in the future or strengthen one of the existing ordinances to look at this issue uh, and engage the community in a discussion about how, how far do we wanna go with tree preservation? Right now, I would say, based on my experience with other cities, the San Rafael's tree regulations are less restrictive, uh, more permissive. And it's something that you may wanna look at. It's consistent with the climate action measures to have stronger tree protection language. So in, in general, I think we are supportive of the, the feedback we're getting. But I just can't really dig into those issues at this point.
Mayor Kate, could I add on to Barry's answer as well?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to point out that in the city council's approved goals and objectives for the coming fiscal year, there is a goal that's included that talks about, uh, looking at the street tree ordinance to clarify responsibility and maintenance of trees within the right of way. And I understand that that's not what's being asked here. It's, but it is an initial step of something that the council was directing staff to do this year. Um, and I think a, you know, a, an introductory or a preliminary step towards what's being suggested. Uh, so I just wanted to call out that that's in the goals and objectives for the, the coming fiscal year as well.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. So, um, what I will do is just call on each of us, it's probably, or each of you, it's probably easiest if you have any additional questions to ask them or comments. And in your comments, if you could, uh, weigh in on the parcel between third and fourth that Barry had talked about, um, and the height, the height, the current height, uh, that is being recommended. And a community member had suggested that that be changed. So if you could weigh in on that in your comments, that would be appreciated. And I will start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'm delighted that we're finally here. I feel like we should have a marching band to, to, to celebrate this. So very delighted to be here for all the reasons that we've talked about, um, for a long time. Um, and so I'm, I'm prepared to, um, adopt the, uh, measure, all of the resolutions and ordinances, um, as presented. Um, on the particular issue, the, the height change, um, I, I, um, support the recommended change on to, um, 20 feet? Or do I have that backwards? Right, to 20, yes. Um, I support, um, the, the 20 feet. We're, the whole overarching theme of the, of the general plan, and particularly the precise plan, and actually even decades of planning, has been to, um, encourage thoughtful, um, uh, increases in height and in, and in, and resulting increases in density. So I think that's consistent with our, um, our overall, um, plant, uh, planning objectives. So I'm happy to make the motions when the time is right.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. Um, there was one other question. It may have already been addressed, but it really, it had to do with the timing to implement. Sort of in terms of speeding up because of the, the impact of climate change. And timing to implement. And I was wondering if you could speak to that a little bit more. Or are we, are we looking at doing things differently or are we gonna address that differently? If there was any comment around that.
You might get it also asked the city manager, because at, at the end of the day, there's a resource component of that.
Exactly. No idea.
Way in. I mean, th- this is a document that is 2040 and we're in 2021, so 20, so it, so it is a long-term document, but maybe the city manager, well, if he wants to weigh in. Because I think that's a good question, what people can expect.
Yeah, I do think it's a good question. I mean, it's a, it's a very long-term plan and there's so many different implementation items that are within it. So I think some of them could be quite quick and some of them would be longer. Uh, that's one of the reasons why I brought up the city council's goals and objectives is because that's a really good way to participate in the, somewhat in the order of when these things are coming forward, is the council reviews the goals and objectives on an annual basis and sets kind of the work program for city staff for that year. And there's many things in the goals and objectives for this, this fiscal year that we're in right now, 2122, that are things that it kind of came out of this general plan process. So I'll answer broadly and then ask Ally if there's anything you would add to that, um, more specifically.
No, I think that's exactly what I would say is that we have, there are a number of programs and, you know, policies. And I think, um, like, uh, city manager was saying that we come to you every year and ask for a list of goals and objectives for that year. And as we're doing that, we're basically going through the general plan and making sure that we are on track. And, um, and, you know, again, we, and every year we will provide an, an update on where we are with our policies and objectives and our goals for the, that are, um, identified in the general plan. So you'll get regular updates and, and, um, have an opportunity to weigh in on which, which items are a priority for the city council.
Great, thank you. As I was reviewing tonight's, uh, document and staff report for 2040, I went back and looked at 2020. The 2020 plan, and it was really helpful to see and be able to say, oh yes, this has been done, this has been done. I know a lot of the plan really gets, um, implemented and, and understood on a day-to-day basis by the city staff and developers and others who are really actively using it. In terms of the community, um, how is the community brought back into the plan? Is it, are we referencing it? I mean, will we reference it with the goals? Will we, is there some material, like a really abridged version that we will be able to make very easily, readily available? Lots of information on the site, but I just can't imagine a resident being able to easily access that. So I was just curious if there's been any initial thoughts around how to make that more palatable for anyone to absorb what a general plan is.
Yes, what I would say is that, you know, whenever we evaluate a new project that's being proposed, we are looking at the policies and objectives in the general plan and comparing how this project is, how, how it relates and whether it's consistent with the general plan. And we, we put together a pretty extensive table, um, and as many policies into that table as possible, so that the public, it's an opportunity to see which, which policies in the general plan relate to this project, which ones, when there's policies that don't relate, we, we generally don't include. But, um, but, I mean, we do, as, again, as we are presenting these, uh, projects to, um, the planning commission, to your council, that table with policies are included as part of that review.
Thank you. Barry?
I just wanted to add that there's a, there are consistency requirements in the government code too. So that the capital improvement program has to be consistent with the general plan and support its implementation. So things like the CIP, um, to some extent, the budget, these other items use the general plan as a benchmark. So there's a, there's a connection. It gets implemented in those ways.
Great. Now, I think with all the community input and support and engagement, we wanna make sure we're continuing to bring that back as we're sharing information that the community really developed this and, and built it. So fully support all the work and thank you to everyone who's worked on this. It is, it's a great document and I'm gonna continue referring back to it. The height requirement, absolutely support the recommendation. That will be important as we move forward with the plan. The, and I believe the last one you asked about is the West End, West End Village and sort of the naming of it. Is that, or is this the designation? Okay, I'm not sure what the exact.
Yeah, it was actually, that, that's a good question. Um, I was actually more about the weight, uh, excuse me, the weight, the height was more what we were looking at. I think in terms of the names, uh, you know, I really defer to the experts on that. I, I mean, you know, I, there's a consistency there. So whatever staff, um, recommends.
I was just, that was gonna be my point is whatever, just pick one and be consistent on those. So, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Mayor, yeah, um, so I have several topics, some were prompted, some were from me. So on, I did wanna comment on the, uh, tree management policy and its reference in the letters, uh, in the, uh, the submitted letters as C dash one dot one seven. And when I look at it, what stands out to me is the language is directive, it's not ambiguous. It uses verbs like revise, require, uh, continue to implement. So I think that it, it is a, um, and it is a shift, uh, that Barry and the team had listened to, community members and are, and I think responded, uh, to the sentiment of how we think about trees in our community. And so I, I, I think I, I would, obviously I support that. It may not be happening in the timeframe that folks, uh, would like. I do think that the incremental work toward the street tree ordinance, uh, is the right, uh, move. As we move through that, uh, consider, uh, moving something more robust. The, on the, uh, height, uh, I support staff recommendation to maintain the consistency of the 20-foot bonus. I think we're, we wanna make sure that that consensus, consistency is held. I also recognize that, um, there is a, an exception to, to that, um, at Latham Street, uh, and I think that the reasons are, are well outlined, which is to preserve the historic nature of, of that block. But Barry, I don't know if you wanna comment a little bit further on the Latham situation for that exception.
Uh, sure. Should I do that now?
Yes, please.
Yeah, um, Latham Street is retaining its existing multifamily zoning, so we're not applying the form-based code zoning to that residential block, recognizing that it is an established, mostly single-family, uh, neighborhood. And so, yeah, so we're, we wouldn't be applying those kinds of height bonuses, uh, in that area.
Um, I wanted to call out, um, the equity, diversity and inclusion element, uh, as has been stated several times. This is new this year and I am proud of how it reads. Barry, thank you for taking in, I would say, close to the last minute comment from me on elaborating further on what we mean by that, and to further name what we mean by diversity. And I think it really speaks to our aspirations and a recognition of the different journeys people take to come to San Rafael, and the opportunity to create paths of equity. So I am very encouraged by how this reads, and further encouraged by what will come out with the housing element built inside of this framework. So I would just want to express just words of compliment again to everyone and staff, and especially Barry for weaving this really wonderful tapestry together. It does read long, it is a very long document, but I think it is, it will hopefully stand time and change with where we need to change it. And then finally, I think this is more speaking to direct comments by Sustainable San Rafael, and just to prioritize our climate, our climate-oriented actions. I agree that time is not on our side on several of these matters, and I think we need to do what we can. So thank you for, thank you for this, and I will, like others, support motion when time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, thank you. I guess my, a couple of, one question and a comment. The first one is, this, the committee has been working for two years. I like the comment from Barry talking about that this is, is a plan, but is, you know, it might as, you know, for the next, what is it, 19 years, there might be some changes, and I like to think that is a live document as well, that might have, might need some adjustments. So how are we checking on some of, you know, how are we executing the plans? Is this something that you're going to bring to the council? Are you engaging with the community to see where we are? What is the process for the next 19 years to make sure that we are on track?
Sure, that's a great question. Thanks for, for asking it. We have an annual progress report that we prepare on implementation of the general plan. And then every five years, there's a more of a major evaluation of the plan. How are we doing? What do we need to change? We're also responding to state laws and so on. So it's a living document. You don't have to wait 20 years to amend it. Again, it's expected. You'll amend the general plan in the future as conditions change, as plans, as programs are implemented and so on. Each of the programs in the general plan is identified as being short-term, midterm, and long-term. I will say they're mostly short-term. So some of them are going to, may end up spilling over, but they're the implementation is built in to the document and to the whole process and procedures that are followed by the city and by the planning department to, to carry it out. So I think it's that, that is part of the, it's a process as well as a plan.
Thank you. And my last comment was like, I appreciate Councilmember Hill talking about equity, diversity, and inclusion. I think we really have to keep in mind the equity part when I'm thinking, for example, about the environment, and really reduce the carbon print and with electric cars. I think until we have a fund, whether it comes from the city, probably not, because we are just, it's not our role, or like from the county, from the state of, from the country, where until there is like a fund that will provide those who cannot afford it, you know, being able to have electric cars, some electric chargers, and solar panels, I think it's something really important to keep in mind, that not everybody can afford to be environmentally friendly. So, you know, yes, food for thought. And again, really appreciate the committee and the community and the staff that has worked so hard, and I think it's a great plan. So looking forward to executing. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments. And I'll just, and follow up with a few of my own. I'll start with the West End height. I concur with my colleagues have said, I mean, that's what infill looks like. And the reason we have infill, so we're not spilling out into open space, and we are committed to looking at projects that make sense. And so I would uphold what the staff is already recommending in terms of that. And when I look back on this process, and everyone's really touched on it, so I'll just concur and say that we've received a lot of input, we, the collective we, over the last two and a half years. And then there was listening. I think Councilmember Hill talked about very specific things that have come out from getting that input. And the plan evolved. I mean, Barry, you said, even from last October, that the plan has evolved, even from when we met a month ago, and that's not, you know, that's even more recent than two and a half years. And this plan is really, is, I was trying to think of a good term. It's like, it's like, almost like a planning bible, as it were. And I know Vice Mayor has the same fondness for the general plan, because when we were planning commissioners, this is what you know, like the Plan 2020, I think I practically had it memorized, even though it's thick, because you're referring to it again and again and again and again. That's the blueprint and the guidelines, the guidance for our community. And there are parts that are aspirational, but it's really what we use when projects come forward, either residential or commercial. So it's an incredibly important document. It is very thick. But thank God, we have great staff that brings forward the appropriate elements when there is something that is coming before the public in terms of a public hearing. And I share everyone's deep gratitude. There are some really big, people that lifted really heavily here, or lifted big, and that the steering committee, again, we've mentioned them two and a half years. Everyone on this, or the staff on the screen, and one who's not, but I know he's here, is former Director Paul Jensen, who really shepherded this through from, from the beginning. And then Director Judas is bringing us across the finish line. But Paul, your expertise and your professionalism was so crucial in getting us started into where we are. And the Planning Commission did a lot of hearings. I think you said, Barry, they had 10 hearings on this alone. So I really want to recognize that is a volunteer body, and we are really beholden to them and really depend on them, so appreciate them. And of course, the volunteers and people that showed up at the charrette that we had on Forest Street, I mean, there's lots of input. It's both people that were designated to be a part of a committee, but there was lots of input through the, through the website, or emails that were sent to staff or to the council, as well as having opportunities for, again, people walking by when they had that pop-up charrette. So and of course, our community-based organizations such as Sustainable San Rafael, and the San Rafael Heritage, and others. I mean, this is all of us coming together to really have something that shows a vision of where we want to go, and this document does that. So Ellen, finally, I wrote myself a note, the previous council. So this did start when Mayor Gary Phillips is here, and Councilmember Andrew McCullough and John Gamblin. So they also had weighed in and started the process. So lots of cooks in this kitchen, and thank God, we came up with an excellent product at the end. And I will turn to the Vice Mayor. She said she would be, be happy to read these. I know the city clerk is going to want us to read it exactly. And they are broken out in order for clarity. So unless there are any other questions or comments, I'm looking. Don't see any. I will ask the Vice Mayor to get on her glasses and.
Glasses are on, deployed, ready, go. I move that we adopt a resolution adopting findings of fact and a statement of overriding consideration for General Plan 2040 and the Downtown Precise Plan.
Second. I'll second. Moved in second. And roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Next item.
Next item. I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the San Rafael General Plan 2040.
Second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Next item.
Next item. I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the Downtown Precise Plan.
Second. Moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. And finally, unless there's other comments, there's one more item on this.
I see, I see two more items. Is that correct? I see the ordinance amending the municipal code, then I see an ordinance adopting the Downtown San Rafael Precise Plan, Chapter 9, Form-Based Code. Both of those items need to be adopted?
I, maybe the city clerk can clarify. I just have the pass ordinance adopting the Downtown Precise Plan and the Chapter 9. I have them together.
Barry, are those, those would be two separate, correct?
They're two separate ordinances, right.
Thank you. Sorry, that was my cheat sheet, Mayor Kate. You're correct.
The Vice Mayor's honor.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm reading out of, out of the staff report. And, and just for clarification, from the city clerk, I need to read all the entire title of the ordinance. Okay, here we go. I move that we pass an ordinance to print, right? Amending the San Rafael Municipal Code, amending Title 14 zoning ordinance, and amending the zoning map of the San Rafael Municipal Code to A, repeal the existing downtown zoning districts and replace with downtown mixed-use district. B, amend, delete, and replace certain zoning provisions applicable to downtown San Rafael. And C, amend, delete, and replace other zoning regulations to comply with state law and incorporate other minor changes, corrections, and updates.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. The Vice Mayor, I think you have the ver- verdict for the last one.
One, one, last one, the last one. I move that we pass the ordinance to print, adopting the Downtown San Rafael Precise Plan, Chapter 9, Downtown Form-Based Code, to serve as the primary regulatory city zoning code for downtown San Rafael.
Second. Moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Again, thank you to all who have worked to have tonight, and have this in front of us and approved. And let me thank the interpreter. I know that they were on through this item, and they will be dropping off the calls. So again, thank you so much. And of course, I don't think any of us really spoke slowly, so we'll have to apologize to them. We will get better at that. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Director Judas. And we will move on to the next item. Okay, so the next item is amendments to the code regarding parks and recreation, parades, assemblies, expressive activity, and other activity on public property. I see Director Andrade Wax, I see Assistant City Attorney Goldfine, and I see Nira Doherty. Nice to see you. So we will hand it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Kate. I just wanted to introduce the other members of the presentation team tonight. The ordinance before you addresses a few different topics, all within the general area of public property, including parks and open space. So Director Andrade Wax is here to go over the changes to the Parks and Recreation provisions. And Deputy City Attorney Nira Doherty is here to talk about the changes to the Parades provisions and the expressive activities provisions. So I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Nira Doherty, I'm with Burke Williams and Sorensen, Special Counsel to the City Attorney's Office. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the ordinance that's before you this evening. And as Lisa mentioned, our Parks and Rec Director will have some specifics on some provisions of the ordinance as well. And then we're happy to take questions as soon as we're done. So to give a brief overview of this effort, we started it nearly two years ago. The Parks and Recreation Department, the City Attorney Department began working together to revise the current Parks and Recreation ordinance of the municipal code. The current Parks and Recreation ordinance and the current Chapter 5.70, which regulates assemblies, meetings, and parades, contain a number of duplicative and sometimes inconsistent provisions. These two chapters at times have suggested that a permit be required, two permits be required for the same event. And so when we were going in to update the Parks and Recreation code, we realized that there were more changes that ought to be made to clarify and streamline the process for the public and staff's implementation purposes that we had originally anticipated. So because of this, we ultimately are proposing a number of changes for you this evening. We are start, our overarching change is that we're proposing re-titling Title 19 from Open Space to Public Parks Property and Open Space. And this, under this title, we are proposing adding three additional chapters. One is the existing Parks and Recreation Code that would now be moved into Title 19. One is a regulations related to street sidewalks and other non-recreational city property. This is the current Chapter 5.70. And then one is a brand-new chapter related to expressive activities that I'll speak about in a moment. The regulations in each of these three chapters address the procedures for the application and issuance of permits, standards related to the use of public property in the conduct of events, provisions for protecting city property, and appeal, and nuisance procedures. And then lastly, the final, smaller change in the ordinance before you is a revision to one section of Title V regarding traffic regulations, which is proposed to be revised to prohibit sleeping in city-owned and operated parking garages. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the public, I'm sorry, the Parks and Recreation Director, Susan Andrade Wax. And then she will come back to me, and I'll speak a little more, in a little more detail, about the new Chapter 19.30 on meetings and assemblies of public places and expressive conduct.
Thank you, Nira. Susan Andrade Wax, I'm the Library and Recreation Director for the city. Couple of things before we go into this. The last update to this chapter was approved by the city council in January 6 of 2002. Since 19 years ago, obviously, things have changed dramatically, including our professional standards, best practices, as well as the city's organizational structure and operations. The goal of this update is to modernize the language and streamline current regulations and make it easier to understand. For example, in light of significant changes to the city's organization structure, like the elimination of the Redevelopment Agency, or the consolidation of the former Library Department and Community Services Department into the Library and Recreation Department, this proposed ordinance eliminates all references to these departments that no longer exist, or the entities, or their directors. As a result, it vests all permit and decision-making authority to the city manager or their designee. Festing authority in the city manager or their designee adds flexibility in administering the park and recreation rules and regulations. For example, this change permits the city manager to delegate administrative authority to either the Library and Recreation Director or the Public Works Director, while at the same time, in circumstances requiring enforcement, responsibility to the Police Department, Fire, Parking Services, or Code Enforcement as appropriate. It also delegates to the city manager the authority to formulate administrative rules, policies, and regulations for the implementation of this ordinance, which allows for quicker responsiveness to changing circumstances and issues. This chapter finally also establishes clarified criteria and procedures for the issuance of permits for exclusive use and large gatherings of any park, building, or portion thereof. And it also establishes clear and concise permit application requirements, conditions for approval, and basis for which a permit application can be denied. Nira, would you like to talk about the other areas?
Thank you, Susan. So the, the new Chapter 19.30, which is currently Chapter 5.70, regulates the, regulates meetings and assemblies in public places. So I will briefly just go through some of the changes regarding, that we made to that chapter that we're proposing for approval this evening. That chapter, like the Parks and Recreation Code, also had some fairly antiquated provisions. We removed the requirement that meetings in public places be permitted. It was a overly broad term and a regulation that the city was not utilizing, unsurprisingly. We've revised the permit requirements to more closely mirror requirements for parks and recreation permits. And we've clarified that expressive activities, which I'll speak about in a minute, do not which I'll speak about in a minute, do not require a permit, um, in most instances. We've also clarified that activities permitted under Chapter 19.30 are also not subject to parks and recreation permits. So activities in, uh, that are, constitute meetings, I'm sorry, that are assemblies, parades, and processions, no longer need to also obtain a permit from the Parks and Recreation Department. We added precise conditions that are applied to permits instead of the more open-ended subjective permit conditions so that applicants and the public are aware, um, of the conditions that will be attached to their permits. We also added a provision staying, stating that the, the permity is responsible for any damage to city property resulting from their permitted activity. That's a pretty standard provision that we found was missing from the prior version of, uh, uh, the ordinance. So lastly, we added a new chapter, which is, um, a, a, a new, uh, a, a new type of ordinance in San Rafael, and this is an, is, is an ordinance on expressive activities. This ordinance is in keeping with San Rafael's past practice, um, and with recent case law on this topic. And we're proposing a chapter that's dedicated to expressive activities. Expressive activities are defined as content, conduct, that is protected by the First Amendment. And so what this new chapter would do is clarify that certain expressive or First Amendment activities do not require a permit. And these, um, are the following activities that don't require a permit. Activities on city property with less than 150 people, or activities at San Rafael City Plaza with less than 50 people, or spontaneous events that are occasioned by news or current events. If they're in the public right-of-way, notice must be provided to the Chief of Police. And these are, um, what we typically, uh, understand as gatherings that are occasioned by news or current events, um, that do not impede traffic and do not create, um, unreasonable safety, uh, issues for the Police Department and the community at large. Expressive activity permits need to be submitted two days prior to the event. And then the Police Chief and/or, uh, their designee has, uh, the opportunity to review that permit um, up to one day prior to the event. Um, the expressive activity ordinance also establishes objective criteria for issuance. So in deciding whether to approve an event, the reviewer cannot consider the content or the message of the event. Finally, it's unlawful for any person to interfere with an expressive activity. And applicants must, uh, for expressive activities, do need to hold harmless the city and repair any damage to city property. Again, that's fairly standard provisions for these type of ordinances. Um, so that is a pretty, uh, brief, we could go into much more detail overview of this comprehensive code update. And, uh, we're happy to take questions.
Thank you, Nira and Susan. Yeah, this, this staff report actually had additional information and really got into the weeds on it, so thank you. Um, I will ask their additional questions, though. Vice Mayor?
I just want to pull the microscope up, um, a, a, a little bit and just step back and, and, and confirm that the theme here and, and make sure that I understand your objective in undertaking this review. Um, your objective, uh, as I understand it, was just to, um, reorganize and, um, um, I don't want to say make coherent, but, um, coordinate and synchronize different provisions of, of the code, but not to make any substantive changes, with the exception of the addition, uh, for expressive activity. Is, is, is that, is that the overall, um, uh, overall what this, uh, these changes accomplish?
I think that's generally, that, that's generally right. So the, the purpose of this, the initial purpose was to streamline and remove inconsistencies between varying provisions of the municipal code. Um, like most municipal codes that build on themselves over time, um, we had a situation where, when we went to decide, uh, which permit needed to be issued for a given activity on public property, it was not abundantly clear. Um, so staff had been, um, doing what was best for the community, which was only applying and, and requiring one permit, but that left some ambiguities, um, in, in, uh, various provisions of our municipal code. So what we did is we went through, we streamlined, we made uniform the application procedures, and we greatly clarified, um, what permits are required for what type of events. We made some substantive changes, including removing some very antiquated provisions in the, in the existing Parks and Recreation Code. Um, Susan's probably better suited to speak to that. And with respect to the Meetings and Assemblies Parade, Parades and Marches, uh, uh, chapter, which is the new Chapter 19.30, the substantive changes we made were to add objective conditions for approval, of, of, objective review criteria and objective conditions of approval so that applicants are aware, um, what provisions, uh, they are subject to when they apply for the permit. But, but other than that, there weren't, um, many if any substantive changes.
Thank you.
Great question, and thank you for that clarification. I think all of us were going to ask that same question, so thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Mine was very, very much along the same lines. The, I mean, I think of marches and I think of parades and I think of those different. So thank you for the 19.3 because that actually defined a march and a parade, and essentially, it's almost basically the same. Um, the one that I've worked on in the past had to do with San Rafael High School, um, and the, their, um, homecoming parade, um, and other activities. And we had some issues around crossing the train tracks. Does this ordinance address that specifically, or is that another one? In, or, because if, if there's anything that, well, at the end of the day, I think the question is, if there's anything relevant for the schools that's a change for the schools, um, it would be helpful for them to know that, um, in advance of their planning. But I don't know if there is. I mean, I was trying to look through to see if there was anything that would be different, and I can't really find it. So I think it might just all be the same, same rules that they're used to working with.
I anticipate that the school district will not, um, notice any changes i- in applicability. Um, the permit will look a little different, and the criteria under which the permit application is reviewed would be a little different. Um, but the, a- as the city had previously been doing, the city will still evaluate the safety of crossing the railroad tracks and would still only issue a single permit to the school district, even though currently, um, in theory, the school district would be required to submit to two different permits.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
I have no questions. I have a very similar question to Vice Mayor Bushy, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, I had a question. This is a little bit more detailed. I actually went down through, um, the proposed ordinance. And it makes reference to fees for issuance of permits shall be set forth by separate resolution of City Council. Can I assume that, that, that these are already established? And those are, those are just referencing those elsewhere, or do those need to be, um, fa- uh, established going forward? I, I couldn't, I couldn't find the references.
I might be able to answer that. Councilmember Hill. The fees that we just actually took to the City Council on July 6th, where it was an update of library, recreation, and childcare fees. So many of the permit fees associated with renting a park or a facility were included in that. I know that there are other fees that will be brought forward as, as other departments are updating their fees, um, and they will be presented to you at that time.
Got it. Okay. And so if, if, if those forthcoming fees are not defined, are we using, I guess, what's already there and they just need to be made consistent later?
Correct. So the fees that currently are being implemented are the, those that have already been approved by the City Council. So only the library, recreation, and childcare fees have been recently updated. The other ones are forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other questions, I will ask the city clerk to come on and open up the public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. To comment on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Speakers will have two minutes to provide public comment, and then will be muted once time has elapsed. And if I can request the timer? Thank you. And we do have a speaker.
Yes, in regard to, uh, adoption of 19.40, or amendments to such. My concerns are, are based on what I have learned about, uh, city leadership, um, including Kate Collin, who deceptively, um, worked with Supervisor Katie Rice to withhold his view as five room key rooms, um, last November 13th, and ongoing from there. But November 13th is what we have the record for. Um, as a result of her actions, uh, a woman died in the freezing cold, a 56-year-old woman who had been, uh, president of her senior class at Tam High. You know, when she, when, when San Rafael City Council brings forward this idea that you're going to streamline public expression, it's really a bastardization of language. What you're doing is introducing more police control into necessary, um, public protest. You're limiting the number of places where public protest, um, can take place. And the language of this is extremely problematic, and I guarantee you, you will be courting, definitely a suit, or at least severe public criticism. Um, this is, it is, I would strongly recommend that you put this on the back burner, give it some time, give the public some time to review it, and think about what it actually means. I want to point out that there was a spontaneous public protest, um, planned for, for areas that wouldn't have been included here. And only that public protest is what forced City of San Rafael to finally deliver porta-potties, uh, to the encampment under the freeway. But that's a public health issue that.
Once again, if you have public comment, please press star nine or use the raised hand feature. At this time, I see no hands, so I'm going to give a couple more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back for further, uh, either questions or comments on this item. Maybe I'll just go comments if there aren't any questions. So Vice Mayor, any comments?
I do have comments, um, because I want to shine the light and get out my, uh, marching band again, uh, for this, for this item. Um, I know this seems like, um, mundane, trivial details, um, that isn't sexy and isn't cool. Um, but this is the nuts and bolts of good government. This is what makes it work. Um, this enables our constituents and our residents to know what permit they need, know how to, and, and know how, how to, um, interact with, um, city government to further their, their interest in whatever, um, it is that they wish to do on, on public property. Um, and I think that, um, setting out our standards by which we're going to evaluate these, um, helps tremendously. And I love the, um, expressive activity, um, uh, provisions, explaining exactly where and how, so that people understand ahead of time. And, and we're not placing our employees in situations where something happens and, um, they don't have any direction. So I think this is just, um, a fantastic set of, um, ordinance improvements. Um, and I will, um, absolutely be voting in favor of them. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, for stating it. Very well said. Um, also in support, and I love the idea that we're actually going, that it's, it's amazing that this hasn't, again, been brought up earlier. Um, but to now use this opportunity to pull together all the different changes and that are really relevant now, that were not as, as maybe called out or relevant earlier. So it's nice to see this all pulled together in one, in one document and one ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Uh, thank you, uh, Director Andrade Wax and Deputy City Attorney. Um, I just take stock sometimes with a lot of what the vision of Director Andrade Wax has been with optimizing, uh, and really creating a future for our park, rec, library, uh, system. This feels like it's, it's one more thing that you are accomplishing, and thank you for, for doing that. Just, this is not a complete list, but just the library fee consistency with the rest of Marin, the recreational, um, efficiencies you look for every day in how we deliver childcare services, um, the fee alignment, the master plan that's forthcoming for our parks and recreation services. So I, I see this as a, as a fact pattern of your vision coming to fruition. So thank you so much.
Well said. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, yes, echo, um, what my fellow council members are saying. Like, really appreciate the stuff for the report. And yeah, looking forward to a lot of events. Hopefully, COVID will get better and we can do more. So, thank you.
Well said, and, uh, I concur. This is the, the nuts and bolts. I love how the Vice Mayor said that. Um, but having this clarity is incredibly important, so thank you. Um, I would be willing to entertain a motion on this item, and whoever's going to read it, be ready to read it, because it's a paragraph, so.
We'll give it a shot.
Okay, thank you.
I will move that we pass to print an ordinance amending the San Rafael Municipal Code to change its name of Title 19 from Open Space to Public Parks, Property, and Open Space, to repeal Chapter 8 dot 10 Parks and Recreation and add a new Chapter 19 dot 20 Parks and Recreation to Title 19. To repeal Chapter 5 dot 70 Meetings, Assemblies, and Parades in Public Places of Title V and add a new Chapter 19 dot 30 Assemblies and Parades in Public Streets and Right of, Rights of Way to Title 19. To add new Chapter 19 dot 40 Expressive Activities in Public Places to Title 19 and add new Section 5 dot 60 dot 054 to Chapter 5 dot 60 Parking Regulations and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Well read. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yara and Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero, and thank you, Director Andrade Wax and Deputy City Attorney Doherty. We appreciate your work on this, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have one final item. Item C, Spinnaker Point Drive Parking Modification Project. I see Director Garen's on the line, or on the, on the screen.
And I'm in a bit of a panic because April just lost her power, and I'm trying to bring up the presentation.
Oh, no. Okay, well, hang on. That's okay. I, I think, the city clerk, can you send it to the city clerk, because she.
I'm gonna do that right now. Thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah. No reason to panic. We are well used to, uh, technology, um, hiccups after a year and a half of this, so.
And Lindsay, this is a drop, a Dropbox, so hopefully we will access it. Uh, but anyway, in the, uh, in the interim, while we tee up the presentation, uh, we're here tonight to present, uh, uh, additional parking in, uh, Spinnaker Drive. Um, we have been looking for additional parking opportunities in, in, uh, that part of San Rafael, the canal, the Bay Point, the Spinnaker neighborhoods for quite some time because the, uh, the neighborhood is, is very overparked. And, uh, and we're, we've looked at, at many opportunities. Uh, we're bringing tonight one opportunity that, that almost doubles the parking, uh, on, on the north side of the street, uh, near the Albert J. Borro, um, Community Center. It is, uh, proximate to the creek and requires, uh, SEQA analysis, uh, and has BCDC regulation as well. So, um, the, the project is, uh, we're looking for a, a mitigated negative declaration, uh, for you to approve tonight. And we're looking for you to, uh, allow us to move forward to finalize the design.
Lindsay, if you would. This is the wrong presentation. Just.
One moment. Yeah.
And I'd like to also introduce Jeff Riley. He's a environmental consultant working with us. He's going to be part of the presentation as well. And April's actually trying to race to the office to get on screen. So I won't, I'm not going to wait for her, but she may jump in the middle of this as well. I think you all know that the, the location is next to Pickleweed Park. There is a stretch of land there that, that has the opportunity to provide additional parking, where now it's parallel parking. We want to provide angled parking, which will almost double the capacity of the, of the street there. Lindsay, if you go to the next slide.
Sorry, give me one moment. I'm.
Take your time. You're giving April a chance to get to the, to the office.
It's downloading what you sent. One moment.
Okay, I'm very sorry. So this is the. Can you see the screen?
No, we.
Got it.
There we go. Okay, beautiful.
Okay, if you'd flip to the third slide, Lindsay. So this is the area we're talking, go back one, thanks. This is the area we're talking about in blue. As you can see, the Tuscornia Marsh is outlined in green. So that's the levee separating the, the creek from the community center and that portion of San Rafael. The area in blue is the area we propose to modify from parallel parking to angled parking in order to make additional parking in this part of town. If you could go to the next slide. You can see the existing conditions. It's, it's, you know, you all know what it looks like. It's, it's a boulevard street with parking along the edge. And so we're proposing to make it into angled parking. So if you go to the next slide, Lindsay. One more.
I don't know about the rest. I'm still seeing just the project location slide. Okay, making sure. So that's still the one. It didn't.
Yeah, we're, we're.
I'm having issues.
Lindsay's able to make it happen.
There we go.
Okay.
That's the existing conditions. And if you go one more slide, Lindsay, thanks.
Okay, there we go.
This is the conceptual layout of the, of the parking. As you can see, there's a number of angled parking spaces. We have a landscaped area for rainwater runoff, a bio retention area within it, some landscaping and kind of a new sidewalk in the area as well. You can see down to the right, there's a handicap parking space. We're going to have to remove a couple trees, but we are replacing those trees as well. So we're, we're looking at this as a sort of a net on the landscaping, but a real bonus for the parking in San Rafael. Next slide, please, Lindsay. Thanks. This is the conceptual layout, which we'd like you to, to look at and approve for us to move forward to final design. You can see the, the existing curb line has moved in quite a bit into the landscaped area as it exists today. The proposed curb line is in green. We have a permeable buffer behind that. So there's, there's an area for, for water to run off. The accessible parking space, as I described, and there's picnic tables that are required by our BCDC permit that are also in place there. And again, there's some future trees being replaced or placed as well on this plan. And one more slide, please. So tonight, we want to talk about this secret hearing and adopt the mitigated negative declaration. We want approval from the council to move forward into final design, if you think we're, we're ready to do that. And the project next steps are to get the BCDC permit to go to final design in August and September of 2021, and then construction, construction in winter of 2021 and into 2022. One thing we want to make people aware of who are listening in on this presentation is the city council has asked us to form an East San Rafael Parking Advisory Committee, and we're in the process of doing that now. We are, we have engaged a contractor to help us with that effort, and we're bringing information to a subcommittee of the council very soon to start that, that advisory committee off and get their, their input before we, we form the advisory committee. So we're looking forward to having input from the community for any other ideas that might be happening and possible in this area of San Rafael. So with that, just go back to, next slide, Lindsay. I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, who is going to discuss the environmental review.
Thank you, Director Garen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Jeff, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jeff Riley. I'm a senior environmental planner with WRA in San Rafael. Also here with me tonight is Mr. Eliza Schline. She's a biologist from WRA and helped with this report that I'm going to describe quickly for you, given the late hour. As you may know, WRA was hired by the city to prepare an initial study mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, for the proposed project. And so our initial study that I'll discuss a little bit here next addresses twenty environmental topics ranging from issues like aesthetics to biological resources to cultural resources, for example. Next, sorry, 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 that was the first slide. You keep it on there, please. The, so what we did then is we prepared a draft initial study or ISMND for a thirty-day public review period to give this, the local public and relevant agencies an opportunity to comment on the report from May twenty-four through June twenty-second. Now, on the state level, we submitted what's called a notice of completion form to the State Clearing House, the Office of Plant and Research in Sacramento. And their job is to disseminate the notice and the SEQA document to relevant state agencies to help review and comment on the report, such as California Department of Fish and Wildlife, for example. Now, on a more locally level, though, we, we sent out a notice of intent to adopt an ISMND to the local neighbors. We posted that notice in the Marin Independent Journal. And then we also posted on the city's website along with the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. Next slide, please. This slide shows you the, the categories of environmental topics for which we found what are called potentially significant physical environmental impacts for biological resources, cultural noise and tribal cultural resources that would result from implementation of the proposed project, predominantly in the construction phase of the project. Now, what we recommended mitigation measures in the report, and with these mitigation measures, all potentially significant impacts can be reduced to what we call a less than significant level. And therefore, well, excuse me, and then the other topics that we looked at, things like agricultural resources, the findings were either a no impact or a less than significant impact, which therefore don't require mitigation. And that's what mitigated negative declarations are for, for impacts that are potentially significant, but can be fully mitigated. And therefore, the city does not have to prepare a larger environmental document like an environmental impact report that you did for your general plan update. Next slide, please. So this are the, these are the main mitigation measures in the SEQA document. I just thought to give you a quick flavor of them. They, for biological mitigations, Bio one through Bio three, they require avoidance and minimization of impacts to special status wildlife species, in particular to salt marsh harvest mouse and California ridgeway rail. The second one of the cultural mitigation, Cold One, requires us, and we did coordinate with the local tribe, the Federated Indians of Great Norancharia as a part of the process. And if anything is found or any unknown cultural resources that were previously unknown during construction, we are, will be required, or the city will be required to consult with a qualified archaeologist and/or tribal representative. And then lastly, noise, the project, well, the mitigation measure for noise dash one includes best management practices during construction to reduce noise levels during construction, given there are sensitive receptors in the areas such as residence and park users. Next, oh, sorry. And then the project description also includes a variety of management, best management practices and design features to further what we call self mitigate impacts, like dust suppression measures, traffic control measures, to name a few. Next slide, please. And so we didn't receive any comments on the document during the thirty-day public review period, which is great, in our opinion. It was fully noticed, though, as I just acknowledged, we exceeded the noticing requirements required by SEQA. So the next steps are, as we prepared the final ISMND, and that includes the original draft ISMND itself. We do have this response to comments chapter, but it just acknowledges that we didn't receive any comments. And then lastly, a very important part of SEQA in this document and the final ISMND is a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, MMRP. And what that does is it identifies all the relevant required mitigation measures, who implements them and when, and who monitors them to make sure that they all get implemented adequately. So the next steps for SEQA include the city, as the SEQA lead agency, shall consider adopting the ISMND as adequate under SEQA before you can consider approving the project in concept, which would be your next step, the separate resolution. And then if the project's approved tonight, WRA will assist the city in filing what's called a notice of determination with the county clerk and the state clearinghouse within five days of tonight, if it's approved. And what does the NOD do? In part, it establishes the thirty-one day statute of limitations for SEQA legal challenges. That's pretty much it. Next slide is just an opportunity, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And thanks for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Director Garen. I don't know if, when April joins, hopefully she'll turn on her camera, so we'll know she's here. Any questions? Vice Mayor.
This is a very thorough presentation and, and is, is great. It's just been a while since I've seen a mitigated negative declaration. Typically, those are handled by the planning commission. I'm wondering why this is here.
Good question. Certain levels of discretionary approval allow for planning commission versus city council. For example, a general plan amendment would require city council approval, is my understanding. The discretionary action in this case is the city's approval in concept of the, the bid, if you will, for the contractors. But you're right, and you could potentially have done the MND in-house, if that's what you meant in terms of planning department. But we've assisted the city on a couple of occasions with SEQA.
No, I wasn't suggesting that be done in-house. It's just that, I, I, I'm just wondering why it's taking the city council to adopt a mitigated negative declaration. And I'm looking at Director Garen, wondering if there is a particular reason, or did you guys just want to make sure that we understood?
And I'm hoping Lisa will jump in and help us answer the question for you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll assume that there's, that there is an answer out there. Lisa, out there, she is.
I was just gonna say, I think it's because ultimately the project will be approved by the council. So the council is the appropriate body to consider the adequacy of the environmental review as well.
Okay. All right. That takes care of that. So now let me shift gears to the actual project. Um, we're at sort of a conceptual, um, review on the design, but you're going to go to final. So, but you want to go to final construction document. So I'm kind of deducing from that, that it really is sort of a, kind of a design review too. Is that, is that a fair, a fair assessment, Director Garen?
I, 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 I think it is a design review in the sense that we want your approval of, approval of the concept. We, we wanted to bring the action forward because we wanted to get the concept as it is, you know, quite simply, this is a additional parking. It's not, you know, a new public safety center or something like that. But there is a concept design that we do want to move into final design. So we're looking for your support of the concept, generally speaking, so that we can move that forward into the final design, which, as you said, as you saw in the presentation, is just a couple months' process.
Okay, that then sets a stage for my ultimate question, which is, Director Garen, in, in your professional judgment, is this conceptual design maximizing every potential landscaping improvement and public amenity that could be included in this project? In short, is there any way that we can make this nicer or prettier for the community?
Actually, one of the things that we considered was rather than cut into the, the landscaping of the Tuscornia Marsh was to take one of the islands away along Spinnaker Drive. And we thought that that was probably more detrimental to the community. The islands there are rather nice. They have large trees. And that was, that was a possibility. It would have saved us some construction money, possibly some, some headaches with the regulatory agencies. But we thought it was appropriate to, to, to save that amenity and cut into the hillside a little bit more. I think you saw there's some, some picnic benches there. They're required by BCDC. There was a comment we received about the appropriateness of the picnic tables where they are. But we've been in negotiation with BCDC on this project for some time, trying to, to, to sort of get the most parking we can, have the appropriate amenities for this area, but not do too much that would encourage loitering. I think you know, we invested in a large play structure at the Borro Center. We're trying to focus our, our, you know, financial energy towards amenities that are supported at the Borro Center. And we have several plans that are, that are moving forward at different stages that, that'll make that, that center quite nice over a period of time. So I think, you know, in this case, we're looking for parking. We do have some amenities that are there. We did save the islands as we thought appropriate for, for the community. That, that goes along with all the other islands that are in the same neighborhood. We thought that was appropriate to do. So I think, I think we, I guess I would say we, we've struck the right balance of amenities versus parking.
So you've optimized for parking and mitigated as best you can on the landscaping impact?
I think, I think that's a very good way of putting it. In fact, this area has, has recently been basically unused. So it's not really an amenity as it is today. And the parking is, is an amenity as well, I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, April. So you had to race over there. Director Garen has filled in. Well, we got this, we got the plan up and everything. So, so thank you for joining us. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, thank you so much. I guess a question that I have is, I know that there is some speeding in, on Catalina. So when we're talking about the islands, some of the options that we were discussing was maybe to have sort of like an island in the middle for people to slow down when they will go through that. Are you looking at this project as, you know, with that in mind?
We're looking at Catalina and hoping to branch into Spinnaker as well. We're aware of the complaints about speeding. They have been ongoing for some time. We actually have developed some concepts. Again, we're, we're planning to bring those forward when it's appropriate, which is very soon from now. The ideas include traffic, intersection islands, you know, miniature roundabouts at some of the intersections, islands in the street that would cause people to have to slow down because they have to go around the islands. There, in other communities in Corte Madera and Green Bray, they are, and San Anselmo as where, as well. And those, those cause people to have to, to sort of maneuver around the islands. And, and because there's parked cars nearby, it causes them to have to slow down to get around the islands. I think now you know that Catalina is quite a broad street with, with, you know, kind of wide open spaces. And by doing some of these changes that we are considering and, and will bring forward to the council when it's appropriate, we hope to, to slow traffic on Catalina. With those ideas in mind, we would then be branching out to other parts of this neighborhood as well. It includes, obviously, crosswalk striping and things like that as well. But the, the actual traffic calming is a, is a combination of ideas that we have, that we want to familiarize the council with when it's appropriate.
So I guess I was just wondering, you know, with this project, if you're having all that in mind, because you are mentioning like the islands, but then if we, you know, like, I assume that is, it complements both projects, you know, having like a, this project with the, if we are like some speeding like islands or some, some of those sorts of things that you are describing, just. just making sure that they complement each other?
The angled parking is complementary to that idea because the lane, I think, has been narrowed a little bit there. But again, we have a lot of ideas that we have not implemented and frankly should have probably implemented with this project. But we're considering them separately. As the design goes forward, if there are opportunities, we'll bring those into the final design.
Okay, yeah, because I think it's important just to make sure that, you know, if we are going to do that in the near future, that we have that in mind when we are designing this project.
Excuse me, Councilmember, it wouldn't change the design as it is today, but we could potentially enhance it to incorporate some of those ideas.
Okay, great. My other question was around the trees, or more like a comment that you mentioned that, you know, we will remove some trees and we will put them back. I think it's really important for the community to make sure that it also looks good because there's definitely such a huge need for parking. So this is actually a great project. But yes, making sure that it also looks, you know, like trees and like add that environmental piece as much as we can. Because, you know, parking lots are not very attractive, although very necessary. So whatever we can do to make it, you know, greener and more welcoming also for people walking, I think that would be nice. So thank you. I'm excited to bring this.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I was looking through the report and I didn't see it, but maybe I missed it. I know we're talking about the SEQA impacts and we're talking about the design. Will this, will these, the addition of these new spaces have the same type of regulations that other parking areas within the canal? So it's X number of hours, not overnight? So I was wondering-
Definitely overnight. That's the problem we're trying to solve. But it's, I believe, it'll be 24-hour parking here. So people will be able to park their car all day, all night, but they have to move it every day.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We've actually, just to make a comment, have had a great impact on this community during the daytime. But we haven't quite solved the nighttime issue yet, and we're continuing to try to work towards that.
Great. Now, we definitely hear a lot of feedback about needing to have more parking. So appreciate the creative ideas here. Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kate. And thank you, Director Garen and Assistant Director Miller and Jeff as well for presenting. I had a couple of questions. One came up as you were presenting. In terms of accessible parking spaces, I saw one visually, and I'm reading through the report. Of course, there is one. I assume, is that, A, is that a sufficient number? And is it placed in proximity to planned amenities? I just wanted to see if an ADA complaint person had examined for the number of parking spaces.
It is required. It's placed at one end of the site that's actually more generous than the rest of the site. So we thought it was advantageous to place it there. It's an amenity for that Tuscornia Marsh walk and in that area. We have adequate parking at Borro Center for people with disabilities. So this is, it's kind of complementing in that sense that it's on the other end of the parking area from the Borro Center.
Thank you. My next question is, with respect to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, for this kind of construction, they indicate a mandatory twice-a-day watering of all exposed surfaces. As we're in the middle of a drought, can I assume that we're going to try to not use potable water? Or to what degree do we have to be compliant with this requirement?
Jeff, why don't you jump in that and I'll talk about the water use?
Thank you, yeah. It's so, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has standard measures during construction. And if you implement those, your impact for construction air quality is deemed to be less than significant. And you're right, Councilmember Hill, the first one does mention watering. If potable, non-potable or reclaimed water source is available, that would definitely be preferred. And, you know, maybe, can't predict the drought here and what's going to happen when, during, excuse me, compared to construction timing, but maybe we could get more rain. Well, we're hoping to start after September, right, is the goal. But I do think an alternative type of water and not potable would be absolutely acceptable so long as there's no health risk or issue there.
And Councilmember, we'll have that in the contract that they use non-potable water sources as part of the mitigation.
Thank you. Yeah, because we're all trying to save every single drop, so that would be great. And then to go back to Councilmember Micah's comment about trees, there was a specific removal of five, and I saw a replacement of one. Is that actually consistent? Because I saw actually earlier in our packet, it talked about minimum trees and canopy on a ratio of parking spaces per tree. And I thought it was a four to one, or maybe I'm misapplying what we're saying on the tree ratio.
There's currently not trees shown within the bio-retention area, but we're allowed to plant trees within that area. So as part of our final design, we'll have a landscape architect add some trees in that location. And then the median trees, we're planning on replacing at a future time, kind of dependent on, you know, the drought there. And then some, we can explore adding trees, maybe in that landscape strip between the sidewalk and the curb. But we need to do some further studies because of the location of the new levee for the Tuscany Marsh. And it might be too close in proximity in order for us to have a certified levee. So there are some issues about putting trees in that location, but we're trying to coordinate with them.
Got it. So what I'm hearing is we don't have to make a commitment at this point in terms of the number of trees that will be subject to further study?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have further questions, Councilmember Hill?
No, thank you.
Okay, if it's unsure, okay, thank you. Great questions. I just had one more, and I think it's probably for Jeff. I know on the overriding considerations, you had cultural resources listed. And I thought I recall reading in a staff report that this area had predominantly been underwater. So I was interested, it was interesting to me that that was one that kind of elevated where historically, this was not a place where people might have been residing because it was underwater. Could you speak to that?
Absolutely. That's a good question. And this came up in our consultation with a figure, Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria. And the report is very conservative, and most cultural reports tend to be that way. Even though they didn't find anything, they'll still have mitigation. But we brought up that point. It's in the confidential culture report that's available at City Hall. But we did not append it to this because it has some confidential information. And it acknowledges that, and it has even a figure that shows it's underwater. The tribe felt like, well, you know, you never know. And so we kept it conservative, excuse me. My gut is that you won't find anything during excavation. It's largely filled already anyway, and under the bay, or previously. So, but it is, excuse me, conservative.
No, that makes sense. That's a great idea. And I would rather be conservative. I just, I was confused by that because it seemed like a disconnect to me. So thank you for that clarification.
And it's not a very deep excavation area either. The project doesn't dig deep into the soil.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any further questions. At this time, there might be more after public comment. So if the city clerk could join us and help us with the public comment.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're commenting by phone, please press star nine and wait till you've been invited to unmute. You'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment, and then we'll be muted once time has elapsed. I will request our timer.
There he is.
Thank you. And we do have a couple of hands raised.
Yeah, this is John Reynolds again in the canal. I appreciate this project. It's going to be very good for the canal, the larger canal. But I'd just like to know what the Canal Policy Steering Committee feels about this project. Maybe they're very much for it. Maybe it would contribute to the whole broader canal area. But there was the concern that people do, in the canal, that's a compact community, a lot of people living together, and the need for parking for trucks and vans, for family people. We need to hear the comments of people who live in the canal proper, the bigger, the part of the canal where people from other countries have come and try to make it and are trying to really survive within this community. I need, we need to have other housing possibilities for these people. But also, we need to be concerned about their perspective. I know Omar Carrera and others on the steering committee probably have a view on this, and maybe it's going to be beneficial for everybody. But I wanted to hear from them, the steering committee, and how they feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. This is Kate Powers. I had just one question. I was wondering if Marin Audubon was notified. I was surprised that they didn't comment on the SEQA because they are adjacent to the parking area because they are restoring Tuscornia Marsh. And my question just is, is any green infrastructure being included in the project plan as a way to manage the water, that the stormwater that runs off the pavement? And, you know, in order to filter it before it drains into the adjacent wetland and restored marsh? Thank you.
Next, Kate.
I'll just make one more announcement. I see no hands raised. So if you'd like to raise your hand, please press star nine or use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Okay, there's another hand.
Thanks. I just wanted to make clear that with reference to the question about the absence of the Audubon Society in this discussion, we have noticed that the Audubon Society frequently takes the side of developers, counterintuitively. It's very dependent on where they think their interests lie. And we've seen a great deal of fuss by Audubon Society with regard to eelgrass in Richardson Bay. And that's been used to beat down on anchorouts in Richardson Bay who can afford no other housing in the county. Many of them are natives to this county. I would like to point out that I have never heard the Audubon Society or its director, Barbara Saltzman, once complain about Chevron and the industrial pollution and its effects on the bay as a whole, and even Richardson Bay. I have never heard Barbara Saltzman or Audubon Society of Marin complain about the millions of gallons of raw sewage that are routinely dumped by our errant municipal sewage entities directly into the bay. So, you know, frequently, white liberal environmentalists have clamored to, unfortunately, to organizations that are really quite dysfunctional and have done, have been deceptive about their overall practices. So I do invite comment from the Audubon Society, but I also advise listeners to be aware of how environmental groups have been used as a kind of catchphrase frequently for developers and for property owners. Thank you.
And I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back. So I had heard three questions that I was hoping staff could address. One is input from canal residents, maybe through the Canal Alliance, the conversation there. Two, Marin Audubon being that they have a project that's adjacent to this proposed project. And three, green infrastructure.
I'll jump in, and April can pile on if she has more to add, and I'm sure Jeff might also. The Canal Alliance is well aware of this project. We have been talking about this for a number of years. The ideas for this project were brought forward publicly. We've written a report that included these parking spaces that has been published and presented previously. This has taken some time to develop. The environmental analysis took time. And so the development of this hasn't been as rapid as we would have liked to see it. But we have gone through a significant environmental analysis to make this project happen. I would suggest that the Canal Alliance is well aware and other members of the community that attended our public meetings are aware of this project. I have not heard any negative comments about it. And I'll ask April to elaborate on that if she has. So we'll talk about that. The Audubon Society is aware of this. We are talking to them about the Tuscornia Marsh project that they're championing, which is immediately adjacent to this project. We're also talking about a trash capture device at, near, on the other side of the AJ Borro Center that will capture a large amount of trash before it reaches the bay. When it's put in place, that's partially funded by a grant from Next Stop. So we're very excited to get that project underway, even though it's going to take some time to put in place. It is happening. So they're aware of it from a couple of different standpoints. We didn't necessarily notify them of this particular project, but they would have been included in the SEQA announcements as well. And then finally, filtration, absolutely. There is a retention basin on this project. And just to Kate's point, we will be filtering water. If you remember the slideshow, there is a large green area directly behind the parking. That's all filtration that runs into a swale that filters the water. And then again, if we're able to put this trash capture device in place, which is required, so we will be able to do it down the road, that will capture a lot of trash that's in this part of Santa Fel and capture it before it goes into the bay. April, you have anything to add? That's Jeff.
Thumbs up. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that there were no comments from the Audubon Society, but they were included in the mailing of the notice of the project. And again, the city exceeded the SEQA noticing requirements. You're supposed to do one of three, either newspaper, posting on-site, or mailings. And we did the mailings and the newspaper and the website notification as well. But I was kind of surprised that we didn't get a letter. But I have seen comments from the Audubon Society on other MNDs for the city in the past.
Thank you. So I will return to my colleagues for further questions or comments. Vice Mayor.
And for me, I'm ready to do the motion when required.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, no questions, just to reiterate again that I think, I feel this is going to be really good for the community because parking is so needed, but also we need more green in there. So just making sure that we are, I know that we had the drought, but whatever we can do, like to do those trees and maybe even some other, you know, succulents or drought-tolerant plants, just to make it pretty as well. I think it's not just that it will look nice. I think it will really, you know, make everybody in the community feel better. So thank you so much for this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
No additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
No additional comments for me either. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just had a short comment first. Thank you for bringing this forward. I know it has been talked about in the community. I think we first talked about it about two and a half years ago, maybe even longer ago. So it's nice to have it before us and really appreciate, Jeff, your help and your company's help on assessing this. My question, or my suggestion might be to have some of the slides, maybe not all of them, but somewhere on the city website. Because, I don't know how many people are watching tonight, but I know this has been a key issue for folks that live in Spinnaker and Bay Point. It'd be nice to point them to it so when the construction does start, and I can't remember the timeline, I still think we're a couple of months out, they have a place to go. So and often you already have that on DPW when you have upcoming projects. So I want to make sure that we get this one, that people can go look at it. So with that, Councilmember Micah, would you like to make this motion?
I will. I make a motion to adopt the, let me put my glasses on, it's too late. Adopting the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring are reporting for them for the Spinnaker Point Drive Parking Modifications Project, City Project Number 11363.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, moved in second. In, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
For bringing this forward. For bringing this forward to us. I think that's the last item on our agenda. There is nothing on the San Rafael Successor Agency. And I don't know if there's any staff that wants to turn on their cameras. Yes, Vice Mayor, I see you thinking.
There is a second action item.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I was like, wait, timeout! I apologize. Okay, you're right. There is another one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you want me to do that one too?
Yes, please.
Okay, to add, I make a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Spinnaker Point Drive Parking Modification Project, City Project Number 11363.
We're asking to get approval to move forward to the final design.
Right. I, I, I think the motion that you want to make, Councilmember Micah, is that we, you, you want to move that we direct staff to proceed with the final design and submittal of regulatory environmental permits for the project.
That sounds good to me, and I will second that.
Okay.
Then moved and seconded. The roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yvonne Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Is there anything else that we? Nope, looks like we're good. I didn't see that on our agenda. So thank you, Vice Mayor. So that item is concluded. Again, thank you to staff. The final item is San Rafael Successor Agency. We don't have anything. I always like to wave at any staff members that are still on, but if not, that's city attorney Epstein, make your hands. Oh, look, see, people are here. Thank you all for everything that you do. Have a safe night, a safe week. Wear those masks. Sorry we have to do that, but as the city manager said, we're going there, but we're going to get through this together. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Take care.
Thank you. Bye-bye.